I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great, we'll do a roll call in for East Bay and then Lisa, do you want to do a roll call then for Acme?
Bartlett.
Yes.
S. Cortez.
Yes.
Lio.
Here.
Walters.
Here, and Cook told us he would not be able to make it, yep.
Uh, let's see, this probably won't be in alphabetical order. Genema.
Here.
Hoxsey.
Yeah.
Scott.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
White.
Here.
Swanson. Here. Wiley.
He's probably in Acme.
He's coming up three.
That's exactly it. Then he's going to town.
Okay, you're good? Okay, all right, we will review the agenda for conflict of interest. We are here tonight talking about the Forest Main Sewer Project that we are all working on, so does anybody have a conflict of interest on either board? Okay, moving forward then, we'll approve the agenda and we'll do a motion and support for East Bay and then we'll do the same for Acme, okay? Good Doug? Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Or?
Okay, there is a, it is moved by Sue Cortez and supported by many, we'll pick Walters to approve the agenda, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay.
And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve, the agenda is written.
Or?
It's been moved by Hoxsey, supported by Stevens, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
All right, now is our opportunity for public comment, I think that this is such a riveting topic that we have garnered a ton of public, so there is an opportunity for public comment, you're welcome to step up and tell us your perspective, but I don't see any. Are you good with that Doug?
I'm good with that.
Okay, then we'll move forward with the subject in front of us, we are first going to do an engineering update and then we will talk about the financing agreement, we should also have Matt Kern through Lea is operating our Zoom call and we should have our financial management available on Zoom for questions if needed. In your packet, before we get started with the engineer, I'll just kind of cover what we have here for you, as you'll know, the packet was updated and you are provided the most recent copy and how that changed, which was just by the little bit of a change in the amount of the cost of issuance, so, but you have a cover sheet that kind of explains where we're at today, tells what documents are in the packet and some links, we have a Wade Trim update that they will cover, then we have the agreement for consideration between Acme and East Bay Charter Townships and that lines out the financial agreement and the partnership on this project and then a resolution for each township to adopt those and then the very last page you show the costs and the allocation of the grants and our cash contributions. Also, you'll find on your desk the 2013 Sewer System Usage Agreement between the two townships, which determines how we allocate those costs. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wade Trim and Gosling Zubek, which is Acme Township's engineering team is also here today, Mark is, Mark, why am I blanking on your last name? Hurley, that's right, I know it when I put it in email, but, so he's here as well, so take it away, Garth.
Thanks Beth, I am Garth with Wade Trim, here to provide you all with an update on what we've done since the last joint meeting. After the last joint meeting, we raced back to the office and the big push was to get an Eagle permit application submitted because they've been notoriously lengthy in review time lately. Thankfully, as of just a couple of weeks ago, that has been issued after a number of back and forth reviews with them, they're happy with where we have the plans at and so are we. In addition to that, we've also had a lot of stakeholder involvement in meetings, we've met a lot with Mark and collected input from him, he's got several details on those plans that'll be reminiscent from his early engineering career because he shared them with us, as well as Garfield Township's engineer, the DPW, the Grand Traverse County Road Commission, TART, the city of Traverse City, and I'm sure I'm missing a few others.
M.D.Rail.
Oh, M.D.Rail too, they're pretty heavily involved in this because we're laying pipe along much of their right-of-way. Having taken all of their input, we amended and massaged the plans as we could and that lands us to where we're at with the current plans today, which are ready for bidding, they have not yet been released, but they're on our desk, ready for a final stamp and seal and those, along with the specs, will go out for bids next Monday. It'll be a four-week bid period with the bid opening date being on September 4th. There'll be a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting about midway through that, we like to have those meetings because it often brings a lot of questions to light that some people may not necessarily want to put in writing and it also gives us an idea of who's looking at the project. As of today, the project's been advertised in the record Eagle, that will get advertised for the following three Sundays to garner further attention to this. We are sticking with the original two-contract approach that we outlined in our last meeting, we think that's best not only for getting a good pool of contractors that are actually able to bond this size of project locally, but it also benefits both townships in that we can put all of the federal dollars in one contract and then do all of the bond-funded work in a separate contract so that Davis Bacon wage rates won't apply to one of the two contracts and hopefully save some money that way. Contract one is the contract that will have the federal dollars and wage rates associated with it, that is from the Traverse City wastewater treatment plant to Garfield Road. In terms of length, it's quite a bit shorter than contract two, which is Garfield to the lift station on the east end of Parsons Road, however, given the complexity, we felt that the shorter length still would meet the $4 million plus or minus funding goal for that contract. We also have provisions in the specs to adjust quantities as needed, so if we get bids back and contract one is higher than that $4 million target that we had, we can, we've still got the opportunity to pull quantity from one contract, put it in the other contract without there being any penalty to the unit prices submitted by the contractor, so we do have that in our back pocket. In addition to that, we thought it was worth, despite believing that this is a prime project for directional drilling, we wanted to keep things as competitive as possible in order to get the best pricing possible, so we have bid alternates for both, on both contracts that would allow for open-cut direct burial, if a local contractor were to really want to pursue this project and sharpen their pencils and see if they can compete with the directional drill numbers. We also feel that's going to keep the directional drill numbers a little bit more honest because it's not just a slam dunk for them either. Let's see, I'll refer back to the memo to make sure I'm not missing anything. The EPA has reviewed the federal contract one and they were happy with it in terms of meeting the federal requirements, so we are good to move forward with that. The project plan associated with the federal funding is currently in the works, that does not need to be done before the start of construction, but it is our goal to get it submitted prior to. Let's see here. Once bids are received and a contract is awarded, at that point, we'll move on to further permitting, that'll involve county, M.D.Rail and city right-of-way permits to work within their right-of-ways. Brian, do you know of anything I might be missing?
Pretty much covered.
All right, any questions?
Appreciate the work that Wade Trim has done and the collaboration with Gosling Zubek, I think it's been really well done and also, as they mentioned, they worked with Garfield Township too and, you know, determined, because there was a patch at the end where Garfield, there was 1,000 feet and we weren't sure what they were doing there, Mark and Brian, when we were at the MTA conference hashed out what their three options were and put that to Garfield Township in writing, they had a good joint meeting and Garfield Township understood and got back to us in writing with what their preference was, which was at this point right now not to be involved, which is absolutely fine, so we do have that taken care of from the last meeting. And then I remember Matt Cook had asked some specific questions about a alternate route and I know Brian, shortly after that meeting, it's so long ago, I don't quite recall exactly what it was, but I know that they had addressed Matt's questions with that too, so really appreciate the work you guys have done.
Yeah, and just to elaborate on the Garfield Township connection, they will remain connected to the existing Forest Main that comes in on the north side of the railroad tracks, crosses over at Woodmere and then goes into the plant, they will remain connected at that location for the time being, under the agreement that they will be installing an insertion valve on the East Bay Acme side of that connection, so that if they, being that they are continuing to use that line, it will prevent backflow into the East Bay Acme portion of the line, that's better for everybody. And then, in the, in terms of the new pipeline going in, there will be a Y-connection that is capped facing the direction that they would potentially connect in the future.
Okay.
Beth?
Yeah?
You mentioned that the EPA approved contract one, basically reviewed and approved it.
Yes, yep.
Do they not need to review contract two?
No, being that there's no federal funding associated with contract two, we are, the townships are free to word those contracts as they wish and fund them as they wish.
Thank you.
And, yep, that's solely for the $1 million that we have from the feds through Congressman Bergman's office.
Yep.
Great, any other questions, comments? Yes?
Is this the time to ask Mark something? Or is he gonna?
Engineering wise, sure, go ahead.
So, I know that, and this is because it's East Bay's project and we know we're here to help fund our portion of it, but Mark works on our behalf, so I want to hear it from him, that you've reviewed everything, you agree that everything complies with the specs and everything that is needed for the growth that you're seeing for Acme and along with East Bay, obviously, but you've looked at all that information.
Mark, come on, come on up so that they can get you on camera, but Amy, I will mention one thing, as they're going through this, I know that Wade Trim was in touch with all the townships, even including Garfield and Blair on their numbers for flow and included with that is some growth parameters that they apply to it too, but sure, go ahead and.
It's more you're vested to us.
Yeah, we met with Brian and Garth and Joe multiple times, I actually talked to Joe about an hour ago about the, some additional comments I had on the plans today, so yeah, we've reviewed them, we've done modeling, we've verified all of Damian's models, so yeah, we've gone through, through it pretty thoroughly, yeah.
Can you put your seal on it too? You're not going to answer that? You don't have to answer that.
I'm not allowed, I'm not allowed to actually. I'm not allowed to actually, but I did tell Joe, I did tell Joe, all bidding questions that did, may come to me, I will have a message that refers to Joe's number.
Yep. Honestly, having, having sat through many of their joint meetings with both engineering firms, they've done a really good job analyzing and challenging each other and coming up with the best thing for both townships on this line, so I think it's been really a good collaboration. Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, then we'll, we'll move forward to the agreement that we have in front of us, and we do have Mark Nettleton here with Micah Myers, who is working on the township's behalf and has a resolution in front of us, you will note, if I could, just a little bit, I just want to mention, I did change, update the numbers, as everybody's seen, there was a small adjustment based on a cost of issuance, wasn't a big thing, but I did want to make sure that it followed through all of the numbers through the document, so the basis of the change was identified to you, but you might see other numbers changed because it was a calculation based on that, so, thanks Mark, how are you?
Doing well, thanks, good to be here, I like the weather today better than in November when I was out here, so, good to be back. So, the good news is, and I think we talked about this in November, is that you guys, your predecessors on the board in that 2013 agreement, provided the roadmap, provided the guideposts for proceeding on a project like this. So this agreement that's presented to you tonight, for your consideration, hopeful adoption, is dictated in accordance with your 2013 agreement, so we're just kind of implementing that and putting into words that which was contemplated under that 2013 agreement. So the, the big ask today is to, after we discuss and you ask your questions and get your answers, have both township boards consider your respective resolutions to approve the agreement, and then that puts into place the, the step necessary to allow East Bay at that point in time to finance that project, that contract two project, through the issuance of East Bay's capital improvement bonds. So the agreement that's before you tonight provides for East Bay to do that and then provides for the townships to share in that cost of that, that financing, and again, that's all set forth in your 2013 agreement, this is just implementing that. So, kind of a brief overview of the actual agreement, goes through the estimated, pre-bid estimated cost of the project, the 11 million four and change, talks about the dollars that have been allocated, grant funds, the townships' respective $1 million cash contributions, and that gets us down to the amount to be financed by East Bay of about $6.4 million and change, and then those bonds are proposed to be outstanding for a period of 10 years. And so then, the meat and heart of the agreement is on page three, paragraph three, about the cost share for the project, and that percentage breakdown basically for the, for the debt service of East Bay's bonds is, as I've mentioned, determined according to your 2013 agreement and your most recent January 1, 2025 contribution percentages. The agreement has a couple of backup contingencies, what-ifs, what if the project cost comes in higher, and the answer there is that East Bay would be authorized to issue additional bonds to pay for those project costs, but before East Bay can do that, got to have Acme sign off on that increased cost of the project, okay? If there's any money left over at the end of completion of that project, that money's going to go back to the respective townships in proportion to the amount of your contribution percentage, okay, that's stated in this agreement. If you get additional cash or federal funding or grant funding, money falls out of the sky, that can be allocated to the project, that can reduce the amount of bonds that East Bay has to issue, we'd have to know that before the bonds are issued. Once the bonds are issued, we're kind of locked in, at a 10-year repayment period, it's highly unlikely that we'd have the ability to call the bonds prior to maturity, and Andy Campbell with Benzincki and Company, if he's on the line, could comment more about that in terms of, you know, the likelihood that the bond market would allow that to, would purchase the bonds, you know, for a 10-year maturity with a, with a call provision like that.
Excuse me, one second, the HOA meeting, is that what you're here for? Oh no, you're here with Acme Township, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Aaron, I totally was thinking you were an HOA member for the other, the other conference room.
I look like an HOA guy.
Nice to have, nice to have you, sorry Mark, go ahead.
No worries. Pursuant to the 2000 agreement and because East Bay will be issuing the bonds, while the bonds are outstanding, the project technically will be owned by East Bay, but all the costs for operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, again dictated by your 2013 agreement, you'll follow that agreement for those costs and cost allocation. Provided in this agreement on page seven, we're not modifying the 2013 agreement, this is not an amendment to the 2013 agreement, this supplements that and again is in furtherance of section five of the 2013 agreement for when there needs to be capital improvements to the system. That's my brief overview of that agreement, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, and appreciate Mark, in the past couple of months, we really challenged him with, okay, exactly what is that breakout, what numbers do we use, what are the data sets available to make sure we were pulling the right information, Noah and his team at the DPW have been very helpful with that, so I also want to mention, we do have some exhibits here attached and one would be the project description, the other is the estimated costs, and again, those, those were updated to tie into that change that I mentioned to you, and then the exhibit C is the two pages from, or three pages from Benzincki that has the cost of issuance and then the schedule for, for the debt. And Noah, one thing is, we're going through this and we're not sure exactly on the timing if they'll do the contracts at the same time, if they'll do one contract after the other, will depend on when we issue the bonds, but one thing we want to do is get everything done so that we have the ability to issue the bonds when needed, so there's, as you mentioned, if you want to talk about that.
So, so assuming that the townships approve this agreement tonight, then that puts in place, sets it up so that East Bay can take the next step in the financing, and I mentioned that these would be capital improvement bonds issued pursuant to state law, Act 34 of 2001, and under that statute that authorizes East Bay to issue these capital improvement bonds, it says that before East Bay can issue the bonds, it has to publish a notice of intent in the newspaper, setting forth its intent to issue these bonds, the not to exceed principal amount, which by the way, will likely be about $6.5 million, even though we've got a, you know, estimated bond finance amount of $6,405,000, usually put in a little bit of a buffer. But we put the notice in the newspaper, it describes the project, says that East Bay intends to issue bonds and this not to exceed principal amount, and that then triggers a 45-day right-of-referendum period, which would allow electors in East Bay Township to circulate petitions saying, wait, before East Bay can issue these bonds, we want to hold a special election or put a question on the ballot at the general election on whether or not East Bay should be authorized to issue those bonds. Those petitions, if signed by the requisite number, my recollection is 10% of the registered electors, if those petitions are filed, submitted and verified, then East Bay would have to put it on the, on the ballot, question of issuance of the bonds. If it was approved at the ballot, yes.
Can I get that percentage again?
I believe it's 10%, I can verify. If sufficient petitions are filed, then you have to put it on the ballot, if insufficient petitions or no petitions are filed, East Bay's free to go and issue the bonds, go through that process to issue the bonds, and as Beth mentioned, we don't have the exact precise timing worked out as to when that happened, but we want to get it teed up so that East Bay is, is ready to do it. So we expect that, assuming this is approved tonight, that East Bay in the very near future, it could be, even as soon as your August meeting, will consider a resolution of intent to issue those capital improvement bonds, authorize that notice of intent to be published in the newspaper, start that 45-day right-of-referendum period. Once that period passes and again insufficient or no petitions are filed, then we can work on the timing when actually East Bay would go and sell those bonds.
That gets us into the fall, that gets us into when we know exactly what the contracts, the proposals are, and so we can firm up the numbers, we also have enough cash to float things, so, which, that means we can tailor when we pull, when we do the bonds so that we get closest to the actual amount that is needed, which is nice.
This is your interest carrying cost and overall cost to the townships.
Yep, very good, questions, sure, Sue?
With the election perspective.
Yes.
We have been told the middle of August for a special election to be called for November.
Right.
Then there wouldn't be an opportunity again to.
Correct.
Maybe 2026.
That's correct.
So that would hold off a project that we would hope would be complete by December of 26.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
No petitions, no petitions, no petitions.
Yeah.
Elections understand that.
Sure, yes, that's correct.
Yep, and I think too, I mean, while that is always an option and should be an option, also I think people recognize, like all of us have, that what value this project is doing, we've had that break, we were able to mitigate that break, or I should say, DPW was able to and Wade Trim, and we were lucky, and Doug and I have talked about that a lot, we're just so glad that a larger break hasn't happened, one where we couldn't mitigate it, so we have no other options if we have a break on this, there's no redundancy on this line, and honestly, we are up shit creek, every pun intended, if something happened, so I kind of think, hopefully the chances are small that that would happen, particularly because the timing's important on this project, but I, I think we can, we can manage that time, time well. Glenn, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay, other questions?
No.
Amy?
Is there eight, so once it goes out and you have the 45-day window, are we now under a window of when you have to go for a bond and you have to re-publicize?
No, no, once, once it's done, check it off, we're done.
Okay, all right, I didn't know.
Because we may not issue until early 2026, first quarter.
Exactly, so that's why I didn't know if it was going to be done. So, right on page is going to be considered three, I think it is, talks about budget implications, and it says each township has contributed 1 million toward their proportional share of the projected cost, how is that reflected if we're going off for the full bond of the 6.35 or whatever?
So take a look at the very last page of your packet, and you can see the $1 million is taken off, whichever way you calculate it, it comes out to the same, but the $1 million you'll see Acme's is taken right off of their commitment and also from East Bay.
Which page are you on?
Very, very last page of the updated packet. And so the, then the bonding amount is the required amounts together. So it's literally the cost of the program, I'm sorry, the cost of the project, less the grants, the 3 million, and less the 2 million allocation, and fair question was asked this week of me, which is, well, is that million dollars each staying with that township, right, so like, we're not, you know, Acme, for example, isn't, is getting there for a million dollars, East Bay's getting there for a million dollars, and you can see that they are.
He got the poll?
I agree.
I did the math backwards too, here, you can see it on there.
Thank you.
Look it off to the right. Do you see it off to the right?
I don't know why they're doing that, Mark, did you say that, can we pay the bonds off early?
If they're outstanding, if the maturity is 10 years, I think the registered municipal advisor would tell you that it is unlikely that we'll be able to go for a competitive sale and, and tell the market, oh, we want to be able to pay these off early. They'll want, the market will want or demand call protection to know that they're going to get the return on their investment for a bond issue of 10 years, but that'll be a market kind of. market kind of condition decision that will be made in consultation with the registered municipal advisor. For example, I'll say, like for a 20-year bond, you'll also, you'll often have, you know, you can call the bonds for redemption early after 12 years, 13 years, something like that.
Did, did that answer your question? You're good?
I'm good. Amy's, I saw her numbers and I understand it and it answers my question.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, Mark, thank you. This is really good information. You had mentioned before there's been a modification to the 2013 sewer, sewer usage agreement, however, there has been a supplement. Where is that? Is that supplemented?
No. So my, my point was that this agreement doesn't amend the 2013 agreement. It supplements in the sense that it is putting into practice paragraph five of the 2013, putting more meat on the bones than what was set forth in the 2013 agreement in section five of that agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, now I can ask another question?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't want to open a can of worms. That is not my intention.
We've opened a lot with Mark over the past two, three months.
And I hate worms.
I'm just talking about future wars and cognitive information, understanding what's happening and so on. When I look at, you know, 2013 sewer usage agreement, it'll be greater. However, and I'm just asking a question. I'm not making any jokes. However, it is, what, 12 years old now? And, and there's some comments in it that state, you know, that there's, well, I'll give an example. And I think you can answer this question. I want to take advantage of you being here and East Bay and Acme being here to hear this at the same time, because it's not easy to be meeting together. Whereas, East Bay Township previously used gravity sand terrace sewage flow meters without reliable favorable results. Okay. That was in 2013. You know, I notice a lot of technology has changed over the years. Okay? And I know the REUs are, 13 years ago, were probably, probably the only one you got. But with the new technology, this, this agreement only talks about measuring the REUs. And with, with the flow analysis, and now the DPW is running from what I've been told, 80, 90% accuracy on their flow readings in 2025, which is far better than we were in 2013, would it make sense, this is a question to you, because you're the professional in this, to not now, and not affecting what we're talking about with this capital project right now, but in the future, is it time to start relooking at that 2013 agreement and saying, now we've got new technology here that is running 80, 90, 95% efficient? Would it be smart to include both and rely mainly on REUs, but REUs have the problems too? For example, vacation or, you know, all the digital. You know, we're doing the best we can, but they, our U system has inangresses too. So would it be smart for us in the future to relook at the sewer system user, usage agreement and say, okay, we can continue with our U's, but as a, I come from the engineering world, and it's always good to have a test, what we call the test of, you know, of reasonableness. So that you're going through all these calculations, you got this other test when you're done. You look at it and you go, okay, let's do a test for reasonableness another way and does it all make sense? Would it make sense in the future to add a test of reasonableness into this process? Because this sewage usage agreement states that we are supposed to be monitoring flows on an annual basis. Would it make sense during that annual process of measuring flows on an annual basis to also be comparing the actual flow data and being able to monitor that and, and know where we are before a capital campaign comes along for the next board and they're trying to figure out how to do it? Now, you've worked with a lot of different townships, a lot of different municipalities, so it seems like you would be a good guy to ask this question. I am not trying to in any way upset the apple cart on this capital project.
How to start the answer? So one, and not to be a lawyer and sidestep, but to be a lawyer and sidestep, okay? The scope of what I've been asked to do, somewhat limited. I have reviewed the 2013 agreement. I've reviewed that 2013 agreement with an eye towards allowing the townships to be able to finance this project and put into place, as I said at the beginning, using the roadmap in the 2013 agreement, a finance agreement for this project. So that caveat, okay? I can't recite chapter and verse all the provisions in the 2013 agreement because of, if you will, that limited scope of representation in the work that I've been asked to do. That being said, I think it's always appropriate for parties to agreement, long-term agreement, even if it's going great and the parties get along and know their rights and responsibilities and obligations under the agreement, to always do a check-in and make sure, all right, is this working? Seems to be working. Is it working? So I don't think what you suggest is unreasonable, okay? That there is a periodic review and to your point, if there's new technology or updated technology that can provide better, more reliable information, that the party should consider that. And that would necessitate obviously then an amendment to your agreement. Not that it's a reason not to do what you're suggesting, but go back to that can of worms, right? When you got an agreement that's working, if you start pulling it little pieces here and there, you know, does that unravel the agreement, cause more issues and create an issue where there wasn't one? Okay? So, long lawyer answer. And to summarize, I'd say, yeah, not a bad idea to take a look at it. You know, in terms, I would, I'd be deferring to engineers as to whether or not it's appropriate to switch from either RU to flow or, as you suggest, to put in some sort of a frequent test that you would do to see if your flow is, is, to measure it with your REUs. I would defer to engineers on that.
Dale, I think that's a great comment and suggestion, and I really appreciate your answer. I believe one thing that we can do is, we do have a new director with the BP, or DPW, and I think that over the next year, I don't want to put too much on his plate, and he's been like with us for two months, right?
Yeah.
And we've had six months with a, without, well, an interim director, but you know what I'm saying. So he's got a lot on his plate. So I don't want to put too much in his first quarter of being here. But I do think that this wouldn't be a tough analysis to compare, like what results we would get under the current agreement that we don't have a huge issue with, but we want to see, okay, what other data might they have and how that data compares and does the result change significantly?
Right. And so that would be something that Acme and East Bay need to do together.
We could, absolutely. I think we would do that in concurrence with the DPW and with our engineers. And then when we find that information out and we say, does this look significant or not? And, and you know what I mean by significant? Obviously, if there's a difference that makes a difference to a township, it's significant. But if we're talking miniscule, you know, point 0000001, then clearly, you know what the answer is. But if there is a difference that we would want to implement, then we can pull in legal counsel to kind of redraft that and bring that back. Yeah.
And given that, and you know what? If we did that and it was miniscule, it's still a success, because that means the test of reasonableness worked. So, in what I was, what I was bringing up. So the other thing is, we've got two townships here. We've got all these experts here. You're right, we got a new DPW board member. But what I, the tendency, and it makes total sense, is our boards change. And then these thoughts and these ideas just get lost. And then 20 years down the road, we have another capital improvement. And we haven't done that or even explored that. So my question is, while we're all here, you know, we have a new DPW director, would it be reasonable for us as two combined boards to say, okay, we're going to give them a year in, in September of 2026, we're going to explore this? I'm asking, I'm not suggesting. I'm asking, what are the thoughts on that? To actually make it a part of the record that this is something we're going to do at a given time?
Yeah, I think, well, sure. As far as, we're going to be meeting again. This project is a huge project for East Bay and Acme Townships. We have further steps. I can foresee us at least meeting once, if not twice more together as a joint township and let Doug and I and working with Noah and our engineering consultants see what information we come up with in that interim period of time. And we can revisit that as we'll show in the minutes that this was discussed.
Okay. Can, can, with that caveat, we put on recently on our board where if there's a topic that's to be carried over, it's kind of left, it's pending. Can we leave it as pending to discussion on the 2013 agreement so that it reminds us all to continue this discussion?
You, you absolutely can on your minutes, because we're going to have two sets of minutes for each board. So if that's your strategy or your process with Acme Township, go for it. We typically just have it in the minutes and we've said that we will do that and the board will hold me accountable to that. But yeah, I think that that's possible. Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I, I would love to pin you down, Noah, two months into the job and say, come on, let's, but we'll, we'll, we'll kind of work with everybody and the, the information. And I have to say, Doug has been fantastic to work with, with this project and really truly mean it, appreciate the joint meetings that we've had and also the involvement of the engineers together and, and Doug as well. It's just been good collaboration. So hopefully we're looking at a successful sewer project. But with that, are there more questions or discussion? And if there's not, then we can look at consideration of the two resolutions that are in front of us.
Happy to have that happen. I didn't know if Andy was available and whether you wanted him.
I don't see on there any, any one. And I know Matt is doing this remotely. Let me see. I don't have any texts from anybody. Does anybody have any specific questions for Andy? We could, yes.
I just have agenda. The East Bay Board has talked about our fund goal and the ability to utilize some of that.
Yeah.
I know part of the discussion was that there are down the pipe plans, but is there a way to utilize some of that from East Bay's perspective to reduce power requirements?
Sure. I think with this document, and Mark will correct me if I'm wrong, but what this document does is sets us up to be able to finance what we need to if we follow this plan. Now, could we finance less? Yes, I think we could. And we can identify that as the part that we take out less on at East Bay would then just lower our commitment that, of that would go into that bond.
And I, my, my statement isn't saying that Acme should bring more to the table, not at all. But what I am saying is, we are pretty healthy.
Right.
And that may make better sense for us.
And it's a changing conversation too, because you remember when we started this project, really it was, that break happened during COVID, and it was toward the tail end of COVID. So then by the time we got around to talking about the engineering, I think we did an initial like $11,000 project with the engineers to take a look at the scope of it. And our, our cash balance and fund balance has, has changed since that time. So even in the past 24 months, it's changed because of some of the development. So that is something that we could take a look at and as we move forward and we definitively decide how much the bond will be. Though, this sets us up to have the flexibility if we need to go to the full amount for this part or if we want to do less.
I mean, I, I've heard you very well in the clear that prepayment or early payment is not desirable for those that would be funding the bond.
Correct. Once, once the bonds are issued, right, right.
Yeah, they don't, they don't change. You don't save interest like a loan. The interest is the interest.
Right.
Though we can decide to take 2 million in cash and put that towards our portion or something like that. So, yes.
I just want to put it out there that at the point that the line is drawn in the sand, make sure we have an opportunity to look at our numbers to say, okay, maybe we're going to put in 1.5. So I just don't want that to pass.
Yep.
By us, and then all of a sudden it's going out to bond and we wanted to put more and now it's too late. So just, because we're not going to be having meetings every day for this. Just make sure.
We won't, but, but we will be in touch. We'll be in touch. The other thing too, that we didn't mention is, this is all assuming that the bids come in at the estimated engineer's price. So again, we want to have that flexibility there as well. And maybe that's where we utilize some of our cash, you know, that we have available too. So.
And there will be a couple of points, right? So we're proceeding down the path, but we're not at the end. And, and so Beth, you're correct that when the bids come in, so next step, resolution of intent, right? Doesn't mean you're obligated, that East Bay's obligated to issue bonds just because we've done the resolution of intent. But once we cross that, check, check that box that we've done it, then we can go on to the next step. Then we get the bids, we get a better idea. You have a check-in point with both townships to say, do we want to change in terms of any, any of our cash contribution? And then at that time, when we're getting ready to sell the bonds, we're going to put out and say, okay, we're, we're going for 6.4 million or whatever that number is. But we reserve the right to reduce it, reduce the amount that we're going to do for a number of reasons. And one might be just the way the market conditions are, the bonds are sold with a premium, and that means you get extra cash more than, than, than what you've asked for. You got to pay for it, but, so then there's another opportunity right there. Okay? Yes?
Will Mike Myers be drafting that legal notice?
Yes. And we'll make arrangements to have it published in the newspaper so that it complies.
I'm pretty pleased it's not.
Right, right. My job as bond counsel, I prepare that resolution of intent. I prepare the notice. I get that notice published. I will prepare the bond authorizing resolution that will be presented to the, the East Bay Township Board at the appropriate time. I'll prepare all of the closing documents and I'll work with Benzincky and Company with respect to the sale and all the requisites that you need to have validly issued bonds.
And now you know why Mark Nettleton was chosen to help us with this project. With that, does, does anyone have any further questions? Sure.
I do. I, I have two questions for two of our Acme board members. With this caveat, when, first of all, I'm so sorry I was late to this meeting. My calendar said seven, so I showed up early. Clearly, I am wrong with that. So apologies. When I knew about this meeting, I thought this was going to be more discussion, fact finding, and we're moving towards voting and making decisions on spending money. So with that being said, I kind of need to hear from Amy, from a money standpoint, is this a go? Just in the world of Acme and budgeting. And I would also like to hear from our lawyer, is there enough information here to make sure that what we're voting on is what it needs to be? I just felt like a lot of stuff came to me. I'm not, I would be uncomfortable voting yet.
Can, two cave, could I do just two quick caveats before they answer? And one is, well, I forget the second, so I'll do the first one. But that is, Mike Myers. But that is, Mike Myers is retained for the benefit of the townships, and in working with the townships on this project, we're both part of this project. That's the way I see it, that's the way we've worked towards it. I don't know if technically that's true or not, but I can tell you about the high level of collaboration. The second thing is, we've had all documents not only reviewed from an engineering standpoint, but also the legal documents sent over for review as well. And Jeff Jox can speak to that, but I think he's had a chance to take a look at them. But thank you for letting me interject.
Amy first.
You want me to go first? Okay, so all along, ACME's been putting in $1 million. I mean, their sewer fund's pretty good, our fund balance right now for restricted improvements that we have always done when we get our, our benefit fees, right? So this includes the $1 million, we have like 2.5 million in there right now, and then in replacement, we have $5 million, and then in operational maintenance is 66, 666,000? Basically, yeah, 511,000 and 66,000. That's outside, that's just our fund balance, okay? That's not our operational that we're doing, and the coming in and the coming out. We typically, if you look back a few years, we'll typically carry over and allocate and spread it through that, about $250,000 to $300,000 is what we typically get each year that we're not spending, typically. Now, there's years that Mark's been coming at our meetings a lot lately. I'm not going to say that's going to hold true in the future, because I know we have some monitoring that's going on. We just had a bunch of work done down on the road, so, you know, that may change. I can just tell you historically what it's about. So we could easily put in 1.5 million and be okay, based on these numbers. But being conservative, because we don't know what the future is with some of the growth and some of the failures, being that it's a big project, it might be easier to hold back the cash funds, we have that for our reserves when we're already in the process of buying. So that's a discussion, once we get closer to it. But are the funds there? I mean, there, sure, yes.
One million's definitely there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got it, yeah.
We may be able to add to it, and we're already talking about bonding the rest of that.
Yeah, so in that sense, I would say yes, it's there. And based on just what we all know, we've had multiple little fractures, that one was one that all of our stuff comes through, we have to do this line somehow, or we are going to have some type of disaster on that line. With the growth that East Bay's having, with the growth that ACME's having, we are just feeding that line.
And the age of the line, the age of that line.
Right, absolutely, so.
What is it, 60?
About 60 years old.
So I would say yes, and that's why we do this. And that's why we've set it up that way, to have some funding. Right now, we wouldn't have to go anywhere else, with the assumption it comes in line with the estimates.
Okay, thank you.
To begin, I didn't hear Mr. Middleton say anything that I took issue with or disagree with, so all that you've heard him say, you can know that I concur with that. I reviewed all the documents. The only thing that I didn't have until recently were the numbers, which I didn't, I didn't review the numbers, I haven't had any data that's not presented or asked to me, but the documents themselves, I have no issue with, they're consistent with the agreement, 2013 agreement, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
I did do the math, and it did balance out, based on the numbers we got from the DPW. So I did, on this spreadsheet, whatever spreadsheet we got from a while ago, so I did do the math.
Other questions from either board? Mark?
Just kind of one last point. Andy Campbell at Benzenki and Company, we've worked with Benzenki and Company, and I've worked with Andy for many, many years, and is very easy to work with. And so he did prepare the documents that show up as Exhibit C. Again, those are estimates. This is a proposed repayment schedule for a $6.4 million bond. This is a projected, you know, when you see coupon, that's the projected interest rate that a purchaser of the bonds would pay for these various maturities. That interest rate and the final principal amount and kind of the final repayment schedule, that's all going to be set via the competitive sale of the bonds yet to come. So specifically, in the back, there's a sheet that looks like this, it says debt service schedule. That's what I, that's there, right? So again, that coupon is the interest rate, that's going to be determined by the market on the sale date, when they submit a bid. We sell the bonds based on the lowest true interest cost to the township over the time period. And like I mentioned, we'll be able to, at the time of sale, if necessary, reduce the principal amount that's borrowed and modify these maturities as necessary.
Now, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
I see this as an accelerated interest, it's not going to be fixed interest?
They usually are.
So it, it may or may not be, it's going to depend on market conditions at the time of the sale. Oftentimes, on a shorter term bond issue, you'll see different interest rates depending on the maturity. And as you get later, you know, farther out in time, entered to protect the purchaser and their interest rate risk exposure, the interest rates oftentimes are higher.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, East Bay Township's resolution would be And our resolution is the second resolution in there. Are there further questions, or is there a motion on the resolution?
I made the motion to adopt Resolution 2025-16.
Okay, escortate has moved, and Bartlett has supported the adoption of Resolution 2025-16, the resolution to approve the agreement regarding, regarding financing of sewer improvement. That's right here, one more page, Glenn. It's stuck together, there you go. Sorry, his pages were stuck together, so, yes, thank you. So with that, further discussion?
Can I ask just one question? I've always been thinking we should be self-funding this, but if we enter into this agreement, is that kind of off the table?
No, it's kind of going back to our prior discussion earlier. You can always increase your contribution and decrease the amount that you have to borrow.
I just would not go move forward if we did that.
And would you do a roll call vote, please?
Escortate?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Anne Porte?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you very much. I'd turn that over to ACME Township to see if they would entertain a motion on the resolution. You know, we've had that happen before, and what we do is, we usually put in the motion that it be numbered in the next sequential number. And no one's ever fought us on that.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 25, or 2025-dash sequential number, the, once we confirm it, the agreement regarding the financing of the sewer system improvement project between the Township of ACME and the Township of East Bay.
Support.
It's been.
Go ahead.
It's been moved by Jenema, supported by Scott. Roll call vote.
Jenema?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Hoxey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Swanson, yes. Wiley?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, we have, we are set up now to be flexible in the funding, and want to thank you, Mark, for driving up here from Grand Rapids, really appreciate it. Want to thank again Wade Trim, Gosling Zubek, and the DPW for being here, and for all of the many meetings and emails that go into bringing this to the two boards, so really appreciate that. We do have additional public comment, our second opportunity for public comment. We've, we've drawn a lot of public, I thought Aaron was the public, but Aaron's not the public, so if there's anyone who wants to make public comment.
Beth, can I do a housekeeping item?
You may.
If I can ask the respective clerks for a signed copy of the resolution, and then Beth and Doug will be in touch in terms of we get a final execution copy, and you guys can sign it, and I'll want a copy of that once it's done.
Absolutely.
Or Swanson, once they have their resolution number, so that we both can send.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much, good to see you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, with that, and seeing no public comment, we each have our regular monthly meetings coming up in August, and is there, if there's no objection, then we stand adjourned. No objection, did you object?
No, I have a question. I just wanted to compliment you. Thank you for all the input.
Well, it's been, it's been a team effort, absolutely, from us driving to Lansing in a snowstorm, which didn't produce any funding, but the federal did and the county did, so that's a good thing. But anyway, thank you. Again, if no one objects, then we stand adjourned, thank you for being here tonight.